Good evening and welcome to the Board of Education meeting tonight for Bethlehem Central School District. Prior to this, at six o'clock, the Board of Ed went into executive session to discuss the personnel matters. At this time, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can we do introductions, please?
Dave Hurst.
Catherine Natto.
Christine Beck.
Jonathan Fishbein.
Jody Monroe.
Brittany Barrett.
Holly Dellenbaugh.
Meredith Moyer.
Wendy Sampson.
And Judy Kehoe.
And tonight Willow Bear is not in the area, not able to join us via Zoom. So it is also her first board meeting for her new, her new session as a board member. So we will be swearing her in in between now and July 30th, when she has to do so for that position. At this time, item two A on the agenda is the appointment of district officers. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following appointments of officers, action items one through six.
So moved.
Second.
So first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That item carries. In coordination with that is the swearing in of the district clerk, which is myself. And thankfully Judy will do that for me.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of district clerk.
Of district clerk.
Congratulations.
As previously mentioned, we are now going to swear in our newly elected board members. Willow is not here, but Catherine is our newest board member, starting seven one. Her three-year term started then. So at this time, we're going to do the same oath of office. If you don't mind, you can stay where you are or whatever you're most comfortable with. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
The duty of the Office of Board of Education member.
The duty of the Office of Board of Education member.
Congratulations. Item four is the oath of office for our superintendent, Jody Monroe. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
The United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
The duties of the Office of Superintendent.
The duties of the Office of Superintendent. Thanks.
Okay. At this time, even I love sitting in this spot, I'm going to try to pass the baton to the, the new board president for this school year. So at this point, I'd like to take any requests or nominations for the position of board president for the 2021-2022 school year.
I nominate Holly Dellenbaugh. She's done a fabulous job.
Any additional nominations? Holly, would you accept the board's nomination for this role?
Do we, do we need a second?
Um, I think I'm going to ask if she wants it first.
Do you want to do it again? I would be honored.
Okay. Oh, you're right. Maybe I should have gotten a second for that. Would you like to second?
I would like to second.
Okay. All right, and you did accept. Thank you so much. At this point, I'm going to declare the nominations closed. Do you want to say anything prior to accepting?
Uh, no, I, I would be honored to do it again.
All right, so Holly Dellenbaugh has been appointed as the President of the Board of Education for the 2021-2022 school year. Congratulations and thank you so much for doing this. At this time, we'll do your oath of office and I'll pass the baton. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
The duties of the Office of Board President.
The duties of the Office of Board President.
Congratulations. Thank you so much. And I left, yeah, this one, that'll be for you if you think that.
Yeah. You can keep that for me.
Holly, I hate to really raise this now, but point of order, when you, with the minutes, it should reflect not that Holly was appointed, but that she was elected. And as district clerk, you can cast one vote for all of us. Since there was only one person nominated, you can pass, you can vote the one time, which would elect her.
Okay.
But she has to be elected, not appointed.
Elected.
Okay?
But just to bring it up, don't we usually show by hand, all in favor, like for the elected? I feel like we've done that previously.
We can, we can do that. If we would like to vote, we can, but since there's only one person. The district clerk, as I said, can cast a single vote.
Okay.
Awesome.
You're still not getting out of this.
And next up, we need to elect our board vice president for the 2021-2022 school year.
I'd like to nominate Christine Beck.
Do we have a second?
I'd second that.
Do we have any additional nominations? Christine, would you be willing to accept it?
Yes.
How about we take a vote? All in favor of electing Christine Beck as board vice president for the 2021-2022 school year, please raise your hand. That passes unanimously. Congratulations, Christine. And if you want to come on over, we can do the oath of office. You're going to have to move anyway.
Okay. Oh, that's right, here. There you go.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
The duties of the Office of Board of Education Vice President.
The duties of the Office of Board of Education Vice President. Thank you.
Next up on our agenda is our selection of Board of Ed, our committee members. Holly, can I just, I think we skipped over the oath of office for the superintendent? No.
No. She was before.
Did I miss that completely?
It happened very quickly.
Wow! I missed that completely.
People do that all the time.
And thank you for the last two years as well.
So we have our, we need to select our Board of Education members for our committees for the upcoming school year. First up is our audit committee. Do we have any volunteers?
I'd like to stay on the audit committee.
That's a go-to for me, of course.
Okay. And Willow did indicate that she would be willing to stay on the audit committee as well.
Well, she wasn't on the audit committee, but she can come back. She was previously.
She was a couple, wasn't she?
Two years ago. Yeah, Chris did last year. She missed it.
She did. We, the next committee is the BCTA Process Committee. Do we have any volunteers?
How many times did that meet last year?
Two years, three years?
Zero.
It's a good committee.
It's a good committee to be on, Catherine.
I'd be happy to join the BCTA Process Committee.
I'll go back on that, too. That means somebody in this room, to be nameless, needs to have a meeting that we can attend. You know who you are.
The next committee is the BCUEA Process Committee.
I'd be happy to serve.
Okay. I can do that with you as well, Catherine. Next up is the Policy Committee. I would be happy to stay on that.
I'd like to get on that.
I'd like to serve there as well.
Well, Jonathan can have at it. I will let the new board member, Jonathan.
Are you sure?
Yeah, I'm fine with that, yeah.
The next one on my list is the District Equity and Inclusivity Committee. Willow did express interest to me in being a representative on that committee.
I would also love to serve on that committee.
Just for this committee, likely the meetings will be during the day or right after school, so I don't know if that makes a difference as to who's available. It's not generally an evening meeting.
Okay. Do you know if the, there is, because I know this will, this question will be asked, whether there will be the ability to remote in to the meeting?
Probably, yeah.
Okay. I'd like to join that as well, please.
It's, it should be fine.
How many, how many board members are you going to have on it?
Well, you can't have more than three.
So, okay.
So I have Willow, Wendy, and Catherine. We also, as per our Board Policy number 1225, we need to designate a board member as liaison to the Bethlehem Central Community Foundation Board of Trustees.
What does that involve?
That's a very good question.
Because I don't remember doing that in past years.
So they had asked, I think it was still when Lynn was here, there had been a board representative years ago, and then it kind of fell by the wayside. And I think it was Mike Cooper, who was the last board member who said he would be the liaison, but I can't remember if we actually had it on an agenda like this or not.
No. It came up at our, it came up at our, a recent policy committee meeting.
Yeah.
That the, our policy said that we were supposed to be designating somebody.
Right.
And we wanted to make sure that we were complying with our policy.
And the rationale for, I think, having a board rep is because they make fairly large donations through that, so they wanted to make sure there wouldn't be any issues. So I think that was the basis for asking for a board rep to serve with that group.
I would enjoy to do that, too. I mean, it's up to you if you want to do it, but I would do it as well.
You want to share? Can we share?
Sure. Why not?
I don't see why not.
Yeah, you probably have to.
Sure.
Item seven, other annual appointments and designations.
I guess I could ask this question. Will there be, once we, if we do another bond act, will there be a facilities and?
Yeah, so we don't, my understanding is that we don't have the facilities committee unless there is.
We're starting the work.
We're starting the work.
Right.
On the bond. So until that process happens.
But I think, Jody, we discussed this, that perhaps, since we're not going to have an actual facilities committee, that people could volunteer to be members of the working, the various working groups.
Stakeholder groups. Yeah, so Greg, hi Greg, sitting over there behind there, he's presenting tonight, so he's going to share the different stakeholder groups. So if there's an interest or, you know, if people want to be invited, a lot of them are during the day, but if you're interested in a particular one, you could join in and hear what the feedback is. But the actual facilities committee in the past has been to review the, the purchasing, the change orders when the bond gets going.
Can we get a list of that?
Yeah, Greg's going to present it tonight.
Greg's going to provide those.
Yeah. For the subcommittee groups.
Yeah, I just meant in a follow-up email after tonight.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sure, we can do that.
Thank you.
So seven, item seven A, 2021-2022 Annual District Appointments. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following other appointment action items, one through seventeen.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. B, 2021-2022 Annual District Action Items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following annual contractual action items, one through two.
Point of order?
Yeah.
I'd like to isolate item one, so we vote on item two separately.
Can I have a motion to isolate item one?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following annual contractual action item number two.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. It is also recommended that the Board of Education approve the following annual contractual action item number one.
What I, I isolated that because I'd like to, I moved to table it until the next board meeting, so that the board can discuss the list.
Okay. Could I have a motion to table action item number one?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries, that item will be tabled. C, 2021-2022 Annual Designations. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following designation action items, one through three.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. D, 2021-2022 Annual Authorizations. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following authorization action items, one through six.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I do have a question, Judy. The service charge for checks, is $20 covering what our bank would charge us if there was an overground?
That's a statutory limitation that we cannot exceed.
Okay, thank you.
No, short answer.
Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. E, bonding of personnel. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following Appointment of Bonding of Personnel, action items, one through three.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. Eight, Annual Policy Review. A, Public Hearing on the Code of Conduct. Tonight, we are holding the public hearing on our proposed revised code of conduct as required by education law. At this time, I invite any members of the public to speak who wish to offer up comments, either for or against, on the proposed policy. I ask that you please state your name for the record prior to offering your remarks. Seeing no members of the public who wish to speak, I will close the public hearing on the code of conduct and move to item B, Annual Policy Approvals. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following policy action items, one through two.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Item nine, Approval of Minutes. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the June 16th, 2021 regular board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. Item 10, Meeting Reports. A, Our Superintendent's Report. Okay?
Thank you. So I wanted to just update the board on the summer guidance we currently have. I did send something out today to staff, and we sent something out to the community about what the new requirements are in school buildings. And there has been some confusion because obviously restrictions are pretty much lifted everywhere, but they're not lifted for schools. So there's still, when students are in session, we still follow school guidance where we ended in June, where masks are required inside regardless of vaccination status. Outside, there's no mask. Six feet distancing still applies. We don't have to do the COVID screener for staff or students currently, and we don't have to report on the COVID dashboard, the New York State dashboard, which was done by building during the year. But I know a lot of people are asking about what are the plans for the fall, and we're not really sure what those plans are. We did have one meeting last week to, with the principals and administrators, just talk about what the current guidance is. Obviously, the custodians, you can see, in the building are busy trying to move furniture back, getting classrooms cleared, so we're going with, you know, anticipating maybe three-feet guidance for the fall, which is very doable to get all our kids back, thinking that busing will not have restrictions in order to get all the students back. So we did send out an opt-in survey for families to let us know if you want a bus because of routing and our driver shortage, trying to get a very good handle on how many students will be taking the buses. But we keep hearing we're going to get guidance, but, you know, I'm hoping we'll get it sooner than we did last year, but as soon as we have that, we will really be able to communicate that out. But currently, we're just going with current guidance. But I did want to clarify, because I know there is some confusion about why schools still are following different guidance, and it's because of the, all the guidance we had that has not changed. So I also wanted to have Dave Hurst update the board. We did have a couple of emails recently about accelerated math in fifth grade. I think there's some confusion about that. So Dave, I don't know if you want to clarify?
Sure.
The process with acceleration.
So this year, because we were not able to mix cohorts, and because we had students in the Virtual Learning Academy, we did have, we use a virtual option for the fifth grade accelerated. So going into next year, when we started to do our initial planning, not knowing what next year would look like, we basically arranged for the same type of plan where we did, we do have the electronic licenses for the virtual program. But as things have unfolded since we made that decision, it does appear that, you know, restrictions will be loosened up, or we will be able to mix cohorts. So, you know, our plan at this time is to have all the students come back in September for the first five weeks of the school year. They'll all be assigned to Math Five, which will allow the teacher time to appropriately sort of assess where students are, to differentiate instruction, whether they need extra support, meaning they need to catch up with some fourth-grade material, or they need some enrichment, meaning they need to work on some sixth-grade material. And at the end of the five weeks, we would then break students up into our traditional accelerated math sections like we always have, so that we'll still be able to utilize the online program, though, for supplemental support. Many students that use it this year and their families did find it helpful, so we will continue to make that available for students that want to supplement what it is that's being done in the classroom. But, you know, essentially, we're going back to the same model that we've been using in years past, it's just going to be delayed about five weeks. We do need a little bit of time at the beginning of the year to see where students are. Again, we had about 45 students this year in the Virtual Learning Academy, so we'll be coming back to our buildings for the first time in 17 months. So we do need some time to just sort of accurately assess where students are as the year begins, and then we'll be able to go back to our traditional accelerated math model. And curricular-wise, this doesn't prevent any, present any issues in that the first five to seven weeks, that's really where the curriculum, the teachers are working on the overlap between the fifth and the sixth-grade standards anyways, so they will easily be able to navigate, differentiating for students, whether they're sort of working on remedial work, on grade-level work, or above-grade level work, and then we'll be able to make the adjustments at the five-week mark, which is about the second week of October.
And just a couple of things to add. I think if we're not able to mix cohorts, which I don't anticipate, but that would obviously change this planning, the other thing I do think is important just to be aware of is that, you know, we have had decreased enrollment over the last, you've seen the enrollment numbers, and it does get challenging, particularly in our smaller buildings where we only have two sections of fifth grade, to break those students up, because it's not an even split, where you don't have one class that's all eligible for acceleration and another who's not. And I can remember a few years ago, I think it was at Elsmere, maybe, where one class ended up very, with high numbers, and another with very small numbers. So it doesn't, in bigger buildings, it's less of an issue, because you typically can break them up, but when you only have, you know, 40 kids in a grade level, it doesn't split 20/20, or, you know. So that is becoming a bit of a challenge with acceleration in fifth grade. So it's just something that we need to spend a little time looking at as we move forward, because it just doesn't work out that great sometimes.
Can I ask a question? Is there any benefit to seeing who's interested in accelerated math, like over the summer? Just to get an idea of who?
Oh, we, I mean, we have the students identified for the most part, but again, there's going to be some fluctuation there, though. And, you know, we don't do it based on interest, because, again, it really has to be based on the ability to succeed in the program. You know, one of the things we changed, it's gone on 10 years now, is we used to rely heavily on teacher recommendations. And what was happening was, you know, the students that did all of their homework, the students that participated in class, they were the ones that were recommended for accelerated. And students that might have excelled on, you know, standardized measures were left out, because they were the types, you know, they didn't do their homework, and they weren't sort of teacher pleasers, if you will. And, you know, that kind of works out through middle school, but then what we were finding was, we had students in, you know, 11th and 12th grade, there were accelerated math students that, all of a sudden, they were dropping math, right? So they went from being accelerated in math and not even wanting to take it anymore, because they hit the brick wall. So we have to be really careful in how we select students for this. Obviously, there's always room for students that don't get selected in fifth grade. There are opportunities in middle school for them to get into that pathway. But we've had, since, since we've gone to a much more diagnostic approach in looking at students, and we've had far, far fewer, we don't have students dropping, I mean, my first year here, we had like six seniors drop math altogether that were accelerated, because they just hit that brick wall and they couldn't do the work anymore. So we do have to be really careful in how we select students, knowing that it seems, you know, it works out in fifth, sixth, and seventh grade, but then all of a sudden, they hit high school, when the material becomes that much harder, and all of a sudden, we have students dropping levels, dropping courses, and we don't want that at all. We want students to be in accelerated math that are going to do well, because they're in the appropriate level, not just because their parents want them to be there.
I'm not looking at as, you know, they're going to be in advanced math. I'm just looking to see if a student shows interest, and maybe looking at that student a little closer, because there are some that fall through that don't get recommended. that maybe if they show interest, you might use it as a diagnostic tool to say, oh, this person is showing interest. If it looks like there's a potential, I'm an advocate of at least trying because a lot of the kids who don't want to do it, they end up dropping in eighth grade or ninth grade.
We've had far, far fewer instances of that, to be honest, since we've instituted using multiple data measures. We have about seven data points that we use now. So, students that deserve to be in the program are in the program. And after we draw up our initial list, we do sit down with teachers and just have them look over the list to see, you know, is there a student that's not on here that you think should be? And then we go back and look at those numbers again. And often, it's a lot, you know, that student tries really hard, but I guess, you know, they, they really don't have the aptitude to be able to handle it.
I think, though, to your point, I think you're talking about the same kind of student that maybe is interested in math or does pretty well in math, but maybe wouldn't be someone that would stand out as a recommendation. I think that's what Dave is saying, that they have the ability.
I was saying with, a lot of times in the past, they looked at the English scores along with the math scores, and that isn't necessarily a correlating point for a student who might be interested in math, but not necessarily interested in English. So, just to make sure.
No, we don't, we only use math measures now. We've got about seven that we use.
Okay, great. And then the last question I had was, do you think there'll be a problem with switching them after five weeks? There'll be any type of?
No. We've done that, we did that before with some grade levels in fifth grade where we had utilized the RTI teacher and we moved them around. So, I think it's just something, you know, we, we want to make sure their kids are placed correctly. There's also going to be some parents, because of everything that's going on, who maybe not, don't want their child to do accelerated math. Maybe just prefers that they do the traditional fifth grade math, which is fine as well.
What, what are the data points that we're going to be using this coming year? Because I'm assuming that some of the traditional data points don't exist.
We'll obviously have fewer ones. We, we used to utilize, so we do the iReady benchmarking three times a year. We traditionally did an acceleration standalone assessment. We do benchmarking assessments. We look at state test data. So, those are the main ones. But, so, yeah, to your point, we have far fewer. So, this past year, you know, our iReady data, you know, is reliable as we'd like to think it is. We do have, again, we had, you know, 45 students taking it from home. You know, students by the end of this year, I think a lot of them were just kind of burnt out. So, I don't know what kind of, we gave the exam earlier than we traditionally would just because we knew that if we pushed it till later in June, students, you know, just might not be able to put forth their best effort. We didn't do the accelerated Math Five assessment as a standalone like we used, it just, so we do have fewer data points. That's why we need that five weeks. We'll get new iReady data, and then we can still look at some historical stuff.
Dave, are the data points that you're intending to use, will, will they be able to weed out, say, a student who is not necessarily doing well grade-wise because perhaps they're not doing their homework, but they're getting, let's say, they're doing really well on the tests or quizzes, they just are not doing the homework because it's so easy to them, they're bored.
Yeah, and that's, that's the point I made about when we moved away from teacher recommendations. So, the, the year it really came to notice, it was more so at the middle school that I noticed it when we were selecting kids for our double accelerated program. You know, looking through the recommendations, and I come across a student who scored the highest, they scored a perfect score in the New York State Math Assessment three years in a row, and they weren't recommended. And then I said, well, why weren't they recommended? And he said, well, they never do their homework. And I'm like, well, you know, did it sort of occur to you that the reason they're not doing their homework is because they don't really need to, they're excelling without doing, you know, some of the homeworks that you're assigning? And they're like, well, part of being accelerated is following rules. So, we really tried to move away from that because, you know, I think you, you start to turn off some of your top students because it becomes, how well can you play the game as opposed to what's your true passion for learning math? And if your true passion for learning math doesn't necessitate you doing the same amount of homework as some other students, then that shouldn't be held against you, for sure.
And just as a follow-up and to push it a little, with English and other subjects, I hope we're taking the same view towards homework. Because I, I know personally, I had a situation many years ago. I know of some students that have had situations before COVID. I'm sort of discarding COVID because of all the craziness. But I don't want to see students that are turned off or disenfranchised in some way because, you know, they're, they're not doing homework because they're bored.
Yeah, so this is part of our, we began having overall homework sort of grading discussions probably three years ago now. We really started to pick up some steam last year, and then obviously, things kind of fell apart because of COVID. But, you know, those that know me know that I'm, I'm very much a proponent of students having, not every student having the same exact homework assignments necessarily, right? When you look at students that are in athletics or students that are in musical performances, right? Every student that goes home and practices isn't practicing the same exact thing, right? They're practicing the skills that they need to practice to get better at whatever it is they need to do, right? So, to tell every single student in a math classroom, your homework tonight is one to 27 odd, that's sort of a one-size-fits-all approach. Now, I know that's sort of, that's a big shift for a lot of people, right? So, that's, but that's something that I will continue to work on, is the idea of homework should really be tailored to, towards the students, what their needs are, right? You know, if you talk to, again, a musical director or coach, they don't assign the same drills to every single student in a performance or on a team, right? It's based on what that specific student needs to be able to, to do or demonstrate. So, sometimes I think, you know, we, we oversimplify what gets done in classrooms, thinking that it's sort of equity, right? Everybody has to have the same homework assignment, or how can I assign grades? Well, you know, again, there's other ways of looking at that.
It may be equity, but it's not equal.
But isn't that part of differentiated instruction and learning that should have been going along, on a long, a long time?
Differentiated instruction is far different than differentiated assignments, right? And I think that's where, you know, I, I think most are very comfortable differentiating the instruction itself. But when it comes to demonstrating your understanding, you know.
Right, but that's why we've been kind of looking at homework policy for a while, because, yeah.
Agreed.
Catherine, do you have a question?
Thank you, yes. I just want to say, you know, thank you for, for bringing this conversation. I appreciate it because I know that there are parents out there talking about this, both at the accelerated and then at the other side of things too, which is students who need an extra bit of help. So, if I'm understanding correctly, we're going to start next year with everybody in the, in the same level so we can do an assessment for the first five weeks, and then after that, we'll be breaking up as, as needed. You mentioned that Alex will be used to supplement. Will it be used as an offering, as a, like, if you want to continue watching, continue learning? Or will it be relied on for assignments and whatnot as well?
It could be done either way. So, depending on how the teacher views the usefulness of it, it could be just sort of left alone where you have students. The way the program is set up is it kind of gives you an assessment to figure out where, which standards you still need work on, and that's where the, that's what it provides instruction for and then reassesses you on. But teachers also have the ability to assign homework test quizzes through Alex if they chose to. So, it can be, it really comes to teacher preference on how they decide to use it. So, it could be completely sort of on the student to just use it to fill in any gaps that they might have on their own, or teachers could use it to specifically assign lessons, which is nice, especially for, you know, if you have a more difficult topic, you could just assign it as, you know, here's additional support in the topic we worked on today. If you find you're struggling, here's another perspective on how to handle this topic.
Yeah, and I think, I think that makes a lot of sense. I think what, you know, both my own concern and one that I was hearing from other parents was the idea of having some online independent study for children as young as 10 and making sure that that's not, you know, a big, a big part of, of what we're doing here at Bethlem. So, I'm delighted to hear.
Yeah, for sure. I mean, the plan was put together as sort of worst-case scenario because we had a plan for that, as we really didn't have guidance. And in order to have students set up, we did want to have students have the ability to at least take a look at it over the summer if they chose to. So, it's set up, we'll be ready to go in the fall, and then in October, we'll make adjustments.
Well, thank you, thank you very much.
And just to piggyback on that, because I also heard concerns from parents because it was initially kind of communicated as, as some sort of virtual independent study. So, I wanted to just make sure that as a school district, we understand parents' concerns. After this past year and a half, parents, especially parents of young children, are very wary of additional screen time. And I just want to make sure that we're very careful about any, you know, losing any sort of in-person instruction in favor of, of screen time. And that's, that's just going to be a concern of a lot of people this year. And I would like, hopefully, we can get a board update at that five-week mark, just so you can give us an idea of how, how our math students are faring, whether or not we have found that we've lost a lot through this year, whether or not we think we're going to be able to make up that time. Hopefully, that'd be a good time for us to get an update on where we stand. And also how teachers, at that point, teachers, I think, will have a better idea of how they plan on using this Alex. So, I would like an update at that point about where they think they're going to go with that.
Finally. Erin Shevers is here. She's right in the sunlight there. So, she is recommended to the board to become our next chief technology officer to replace Ray Nardelli. So, I wanted to introduce her to the board, put a face with a name. And I told her she could give her speech now, if that's okay?
Sure, welcome, Erin.
Thank you, I'm just really excited to be here and be part of the team and move forward for everything with everybody.
Did you walk here tonight, Erin?
I didn't walk here, it's just that I didn't want to get.
Right, because this is so cool in here.
Well, welcome.
You'll get used to her because she'll be at the board meetings, so.
Jody, did you have anything else?
No, I'm sorry, that's it.
Did anybody have any additional questions for Jody or Dave?
I have one, one item that we discussed at graduation, which I'm very delighted we were able to have in person this year. In the book, I think it would be helpful if we had a list of all of the different chords and other decorations, not the ones on the hats, but the, the others, so that we have an idea as to what, what all the chords and decorations are for.
So, we did ask Dave, and he said a lot of them, clubs just bought chords, right? Was it, who was he talking to?
He indicated that, I guess, some students just, they purchase them.
Right.
Through their clubs or wear medals of unknown origin.
But if we, if we have district-issued chords, we could include that.
Because there were some, there were some medals that you said were, I, I don't want to use the word legit or illegit, but official, let's say. And there were also some.
Alana, for the Alanas, graduates.
For the honor graduates, yeah. So, whatever is official, I'd like at least to be acknowledged in the book from going forward.
Yep, we can do that.
Thank you.
I've been asking for seven years, so I actually feel there's some legitimacy to know. My parents want to know, too, like, I wonder where they got all of those. But there's a lot of them that are issued by school.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Like, I think there's music, national honor, maybe language, I mean, there's a ton of them.
If they just buy them on their own, we're probably not going to have those colors, but yes, we can include them.
Any other questions or comments for Jody? Next up is our board report. And just following up on the comments about graduation, one more congratulations to our class of 2021. And a thank you to all of the administrative staff who worked on the graduation, putting it together. I know that it was challenging, especially given that the guidance kept changing up until, I think, the last couple of days before the graduation took place. But it really was nice to be able to be there in person this year in one ceremony and have everybody have their, their friends and family there to cheer them on. I also wanted officially to welcome Catherine to the board. We're excited to have you. And I did also want to thank Meredith for the last two years that you've spent as vice president for the board. So, thank you, thank you. Did anybody have any other comments or things they would like to share?
The speakers, the senior speakers at graduation, they did a tremendous job. And it was very, it was such a nice time to be in person again and to see all the kids, and I think they appreciated it. And there is a little bit of a difference with the pomp and circumstance, I think, compared to what we did, what we made happen last year, which was great. I was part of that with a graduate, and I loved it. But there was something special about this year and having that be available to all the kids and their families. So, I'm glad that we were able to put it together.
Any other comments, thoughts? Okay, then moving on to item 11, our presentation this evening. We have a presentation on our potential facilities improvement project. Watch all the chords.
Little bit of an obstacle course to get you. Good evening. We also have Greg Melty here, who will be joining us in a moment. And then Drew Jones is online to join us as well, in case you have any really tough architectural-related questions for us. So, we have been meeting regularly, as you know, who's counting, but this is our sixth presentation on the bonds at this point. And as you know, we started with the lengthy facilities plan update where we looked at everything, high, medium, and low priorities. And then we whittled that down to the most important projects based on condition of the underlying items. And then we've also, not only have we had these public meetings, but we've also had a number of stakeholder group meetings that we had mentioned earlier, where we have had the opportunity to really drill down a little bit deeper into the specific components of a project and make sure that the concept makes sense relative to the design that will be implemented. We also have placed project information on our website. So, anybody who would like to get additional information is able to, and that's on the next slide, please, is able to get that information and look at either prior board meetings, any of the detailed reports or presentations that we have presented. So, on this next slide, I really wanted to give you a sense, although we don't have final totals yet on the project amounts. And we've been talking about the various sources of funding that we have available, so I wanted to pull it all together into one summary so that you have a better sense of what this looks like economically to the community. So, we started with the initial project amount of $35.9 million. And we have been looking at various projects that we wanted to add to this list based on either questions from the board to reconsider the priority of certain items. We had talked about at the last meeting, adding a pavilion out by the bleachers, by the track, so that we would have a shaded area for our athletes and families and other users for $182,000. We had discussed the middle school tennis courts and realized that based on their condition, those should probably be elevated in priority. And also, we talked about the addition that is hopefully coming with modified tennis teams as well. So, that was added for $869,000 to the totals. We had a request to put a canopy here outside of the cafeteria so that we would have another shaded area where students could congregate and yet still be protected from the elements, and that would be $183,000. And then we also talked about the outdoor teaching area at the middle school. Greg will cover that in a few moments and give you some renderings of what that will look like, but that would be about $258,000. Remember, all of these costs, if you're having sticker shock, reflect not just the hard dollar costs, but also the soft costs associated with the administration of a bond. So, it includes things like your architectural fees, bond council fees, and things of that nature. So, the $37.4 million, of course, won't be the final total. We don't have a final total yet. We're going to continue these discussions. We also, through the conversations with the various stakeholder groups, have some other modifications to some of the items that are included within that $35.9 million. We're going to touch on those in greater depth at the next presentation in August. So, the final number will be whatever the board decides that final number will be, potentially at the next meeting. So, in round numbers, figure somewhere around the $37, $38 million amount. So, when we get the board and the community authorization to spend whatever that final amount is, it's going to go before the voters, who will. who will ultimately approve this not-to-exceed amount. We don't have this money just sitting around, ready to be spent on the capital projects. We will issue bonds to finance the cost of that work. And the way the bonds are structured is they are repaid over a 15-year period. So the large portion of the financing or the support for these projects comes to us in the form of building aid, and that, too, is aligned to a 15-year timeline. So when you look at this slide and you see these total expenditures and these total sources of funding, that's so that you have a sense of the broad economics of the money coming in and the money going out. But ultimately, this is going to be broken down into little one-year pieces that align with the payment of the principal and interest on those bonds, along with the receipt of the state aid or the building aid that comes to us. So this project is a little bit different from the prior projects that we've talked about because we have some other pretty significant funding sources available to us. So at, I think it was two meetings prior, we talked about the federal money that we have available to us through the American Rescue Plan and the elementary and secondary emergency relief funds, ARP and ESER, if you're looking for more acronyms. So based on that spending plan that has been released to the public, that's just shy of $2.4 million. That would be a source of funds to help pay for the cost of the project. So that would simply be an offset to what we would otherwise have to bond to pay for the cost of this work. We also have money available to us through the federal E-Rate program, which are funds that are earmarked for technology-specific purposes. I see Erin nodding her head out there. We have about just over $500,000 in E-Rate funding that we would be eligible for to cover the technology components. So again, if the money's coming in from another source, we would not need to bond that piece of the project. And then, most significantly of all, we've been saving in anticipation of this project for several years now. And we have built up through June 30 of this year $15.1 million in the capital reserves that the board and the community established for this very purpose. So because we have that money available, we also would not have to issue bonds for that amount. So the federal and local sources of funding is just under $18 million of our total amounts to be expended. So the last piece of that is the amount that would flow to us in building aid. So if the project amount is $37 million, the state has, of course, formulas for everything. Not 100% of that amount is actually going to be eligible for state aid. So when we make these projections of how much building aid, I assume that only 95% of the project costs are actually going to be eligible for the building aid. And that's just a number based on our experience from these capital projects in the past, and again, looking at the mix of what is in the project and what typically gets aided. Then, we, of those eligible expenditures, our building aid ratio gets applied to that. And right now, that ratio is about 70%, and it's hovered plus or minus 1% to that 70% level. So that is a state-funded, significant portion of these project costs that will also flow to the district over this 15-year period. So what is really unusual, how often do we come to the point where we have more in sources than we have in proposed expenditures? So that, I've been saying throughout all of these meetings that this would be a budget-neutral proposition for the community. And in fact, based on our ability to draw on these reserves, there's actually a positive annual cash flow associated with this project because the building aid will slightly outpace the amount of the projected debt service for this project. So, and interest rates continue to be very, very low. So it really is a very favorable time to move forward with this project. So I will update these estimates for you as we go along. Once we determine what the final project expenditure amount is, we will look at that and update these projections. But even if the numbers change slightly, it is not expected in any way, shape, or form to change what is a very positive annual cash flow situation relative to this project.
Would we, if, if the total sources of funding are 49, 35, I mean, are we essentially, are we leaving money on the table by not adding more of our, from our list of?
The lower-level items?
The items that we, you know, that we need to do down the road, but we didn't put in initially, like the tennis courts, for example? Like, are there things that we should be adding in order to make sure that we're taking full advantage of the funding sources?
This means that the board has the capacity to add more to the project without causing a net cost to the community. So what should or shouldn't be included is really going to come down to a question of preference in terms of the needs. There is certainly a long line of other elements within the immediate, or the medium ranking of priorities. So if if the feedback that we get tonight is that you'd like to see the next five elements to be considered because you're, you think you might want to spend on a larger project, we can come back with that information at the August meeting.
And then conversely, if we were to, I mean, one of the things that I wonder about, and I'm sure you've covered this, could you remind me what this does to the remaining capital reserves? If we were to pull the 15 million out, how does the capital reserve stand after that?
The $15.1 million would exhaust the existing capital reserves. And I think that's appropriate in this case. There are two capital reserves. And I would anticipate that we would create new capital reserves going forward. So in each year, because we use conservative budgeting practices, we tend to have a surplus. And a very logical place to put that surplus each year is into a capital reserve. These reserves are set with a finite term, so we need to use them up within that term that has been approved by the board and the community. So knowing that we would be building other reserves, I'm very comfortable recommending that you completely draw down on the 15.1.
In the term?
You could draw less. So if you decide, you know what, 37.4 is the size of the project, we don't have to pull all of it from that capital reserve.
But what's the term limit? 10 years?
It's a 10-year term, 10 years from the start.
And we have two, right?
We have two.
One will be done.
One, one is being exhausted on the current bond issue.
No.
No?
One has been used to the tune of $4.9 million on the current bond, leaving $5.1 million. And then the second reserve, the board approved a transfer into that at the last meeting, and that is now maxed out at the 10 million. 10 plus the 5.1 is our 15.1.
But what's the the second, the capital reserve we established after the first one? What's the expiration timeframe on that? Do you remember?
We have more time. It's 10 years. That was, I believe, a 2017 reserve, so we could go through 2027.
And it would make, just from a fiscal point of view, if we were to add projects up to the point of our funding sources to keep it revenue-neutral, or neutral?
Yes, you could.
On on the balance sheet, it would be less expensive overall because we're doing it now rather than in the future.
True.
So anything we do is going to cost less to do it now.
Well, with lumber.
Well, no, actually, by the time we get to buying the lumber, the lumber will probably be back to.
This will be two years out by the time we get through the various design steps and then the approvals from SED.
And and then, can you just go back to the building aid real quick? You mentioned that that is a, that's a formula that provides us with that number, so we're not going to get hit for having additional, for having sources of funding that exceed the cost. It's not, we're not obligated to balance this in order to continue?
Correct. It's a straight formula.
Wonderful, thank you.
Can we get, if you're going to bring in items that are on the lower part of the list, maybe what the next big project might be to be able to identify when we're thinking of considering doing that? And if we want to save, let's say, 2, 3 million from this one to put towards, and if it's going to be within the next?
For the future.
For the future, just so we have both the big item. And I just don't want to go down the list just to go down the list if we don't know what the bigger projects are.
There's also still some remaining items from stakeholder meetings that were part of discussions, too, that could add to this. But we can look at the, that to see if we want to, you could potentially go lower and not use all of that and look at what we have coming up, or you can go up to this amount or higher technically. But, yeah, we can do that.
Is any of the the federal funding that's coming through, either the ARP, ESER, or any of the rest, is any of that time limited? In other words, we have to use it or lose it?
Yes.
Okay, so.
It will expire in three years.
Expired by use or expired by appropriation for use?
Use. Use.
So.
So you'd have to, you'd want to use those funds for some of the initial projects.
And along with the idea of getting a list, can we get a list of priorities?
Yeah, we have that.
Okay.
And just last question, with the total sources of funding. So let's say we made the potential project, I'm just going to go up to 45 million. Let's say we found some other big-ticket item we wanted to conclude. The estimated building aid would go up.
Would go higher.
From that percentage upwards. So can you possibly give us the actual number that you project where we would be even not receiving any additional money so that we could maximize the break-up?
I could work that up.
Where would we break even?
Are you thinking of using, of getting that 20,000 positive cash flow down to zero so we can maximize what we can spend?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
I also think that, yeah. Well, I also thought.
Well, relatively free.
It's all coming from taxpayer pockets, whether it's state or federal or local.
I also think it is important to keep in mind the magnitude of the project, right? Because we don't want to be in a position where we can't, we can't find the labor in order to get the project done in a timely manner. I mean, I think that we learned that from years ago, that too big is not necessarily a great option. And that we want to make sure that whatever we propose, we can get done, done well and within the timeframe. So sometimes bigger.
Too here.
Right, sometimes bigger is not better.
I don't think we'll ever do another $92 million bond.
But I'm just thinking also that, I mean, with the interest rates as low as they are right now, like, that is also factoring into my.
Right. So I'll run a few scenarios for you. I love it when you want more information on finances. But anyway.
Thank you. Well, this is good, and thank you for starting the capital reserve fund because it really has helped the district since I've been here to fund these types of projects. I mean, we wouldn't be able to do half of it had we not started this fund, so it's been great.
It makes it much easier, and then you throw in some federal resources as well. So it's a good time to get your facilities in tip-top shape. Yep. So with that, Mr. Malti, I'm going to turn it over to you, and I'll be in the wings.
Thanks, Judy.
So I love this conversation.
What do you want, Greg? Hey, I'll be giving you limits, no worries.
You're going, let's give you a present. What do you want?
So it's good seeing all your faces, finally. So tonight, I'm going to give you some more information and a better understanding of the pavilion structure that you, that we talked about last week, a couple of weeks ago. You were looking for some examples, so we'll show you some renditions of that. I'm going to give you more information about the middle school teaching area, the outdoor teaching area that was brought up. And then as well, we're going to recap, again, the synthetic turf proposal. Okay? So. The pavilion. We're proposing the pavilion at the gravel, the large gravel area next to Van Dyke there. That has been the staging area for a number of construction projects. Basically, the pavilion would be about a 40 by 44 area or structure. And then we would actually finish off the remainder of that area with drainage and landscaping and just basically make it very nice there. Overall, project cost was about $182,000. The pavilion, as we kind of heard before, could be used as an eating or picnic area, an outdoor classroom, could be used for various school functions, athletic functions. And of course, it would be an additional community resource as well. So we actually have a couple of examples here. And what we want to be careful of and to make sure that we keep the the atmosphere and the architecture of what is around it, being the bleachers, the gatehouse, and some of the lines. So that's where our designers will come in and do their best. So we already had questions and conversations about this, about the openness and, you know, whether or not in some of our rains that we've had, whether or not having it open at the top is a benefit at all. But this just gives you an idea of what is out there. All right, it would be lighted as well, so.
The design's awesome.
Can we, for for things like this, all right, thank you. I just wonder, too, can we look at this with a mind for some green infrastructure as well, whether it be solar panels that help to provide the lighting right there, charging stations, things like that for phones and whatnot, and also just green roofs and impervious surfaces, just whenever and wherever we can?
Okay. Okay, next. So we talked about an outdoor teaching area, at least another outdoor teaching area. Both Nick and Sonia and I met with the middle school administration to get what they were envisioning this this area to be. And the area that we're talking about is in front of the the LMC, which is basically to the left of that large tree, basically into that embankment there. They're looking for a single-level, not a tiered, structure, which initially I thought is what they were looking for. It would be used for classes, classes, large groups, maybe some musical performances, grade-level assemblies. We possibly use the parking area for patrons and visitors. And the cost here actually was higher than I expected, about $258,000.
Greg, is this a pavilion-type thing, or what are they envision, covered and uncovered?
Yeah, so you can go to the next slide, please. And really, what we're looking at, the architects worked up this this plan. This would basically be a single level that is pretty much at the same level as the bus parking area and basically dug into the embankment. So the back where you see those purple trees would be a retaining wall. Okay, and we talked about what I want, what I want to be careful of is that it doesn't necessarily look like an addition. So we would, you know, I want to use, like, similar brick, possibly have some inlays of the arches that you see at the front of the school.
Is there any other location, I mean, the way, just visually from the bro, I mean, the way the library was done, it's aesthetically pleasing to the eye. And you're, I just don't see how that looks good. And if I were somebody in the neighborhood that was across the street, I don't know if I would necessarily be pleased with putting it right there and changing the front and having a classroom.
So I mean, we did, we talked about, you know, how many outdoor teaching areas can you have? You can't really put it in the back because you take up field space. You know, we do live in the Northeast, so. Yeah, and this was a request. This wasn't one, this was not on the priority list of items. This was an add, so it's certainly not something we have to do. The middle school is.
Well, I have a thought on the tennis courts because I can't remember how many are in the back, and then there's two in the front. But if you moved it and added just an additional one, you might lose one court, but take a lot of that space where the two.
I don't think you'd want to lose a tennis court because they use those for phys ed. I don't think you'd want to lose a tennis court because they use those for phys ed, for teaching. That's a space they use a lot.
But what if you made it all this way? Would there be?
I'm just thinking, I understand the concern about the front, but I'm wondering from a height point of view, if this is currently that embankment going up and it's dug in at the same level of the bus parking, what's the rise? In other words, how high is that retaining wall? Because you don't necessarily have to put trees on the retaining wall. You could have, say, a three-foot bush and it might not change what you see from the street. I don't know because I don't know.
If it was a half level or something.
Right, half level, because I don't know what the height is, but it might be possible to have that without affecting the sightline.
Yeah, so we, we talked, I think we figured about five, six-foot retaining wall and whether or not we, we have a barrier of trees or bushes or we'd have a railing going down the sidewalk that is, you know, directly in front of the LMC and out of the orchestra room there. Again, we would get into that as we dive into the design. We looked.
Could you go back to the prior slide?
But it would, it would create a barrier visually from the LMC out.
Yes.
You're not going to not, right? I think that's what Christine's saying. I kind of agree with that.
What about the side right there of the LMC?
So we looked, on the, the left side, we have the stage there. We talked about expanding that, where we had the Charlie Brown performance.
Yeah, that's why I'm here. Why not put it there?
And they would, middle school administration preferred this area as, as an addition.
I'm not sure the community is going to love that. That's just a feeling I get, but I'm just speaking out loud.
You probably see this more from those houses that are along the pines there.
Just from aesthetically, from a community perspective, driving by the school, that the view of the LMC is one of the best parts of the front of the building when you're.
We talked about within these arches potentially because it's, it'll be a pretty good sized wall that with the inlays, maybe you put something that, you know, B-C-M-S, you know, lighted. I mean, it could be a nice focal point. Again, this is all preliminary at this point.
Could we work up the side too? Like, could we work up both or they just absolutely don't want the side of the, the school?
I didn't ask them that.
I think if you had it on the side and it's near the stage area, the goal, I mean, they've got the pavilion in the back, then the stage area on the side. If you had this next to the stage and you're trying to do classes outdoors, they're going to interfere with each other.
And excuse me, just for, for the new guy, the, they here, this is a request from the middle school administration.
Right.
And thank you.
I, I mean, I personally am always hesitant to dig up grass, which is aesthetically pleasing, but also, you know, a natural environment to put down a pavement unless there's a real reason for it. Additionally, I feel like any outdoor teaching area should have shade. I wouldn't want to go out and have, you know, an English classroom, class in September in 90-degree weather if there was no shade. So, I mean, I personally am not feeling this. I don't know, maybe we could get more information from the administration about why they think this is necessary because there is a pavilion and there is a, a stage. I love the idea of outdoor education, absolutely, but I'd, I'd rather see, if there's going to be outdoor education, I'd rather see them moving around in the fields and doing something. I'm just not really feeling this, this project.
I was thinking a multipurpose.
When you, you said that you had run this, the draft design past the folks at the middle school so far?
Do you want to go to the slide?
Thank you. I'm guessing we're not the first people to have heard this?
We're the first to see.
We're the first to, oh, wrong guess. I guessed wrong.
Well, you could see, you could kind of see the odd structure of it. I didn't really want to lose the large tree there.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Keep that. We had conversations about pavers or grass, you know, and so we don't lose that. But we figured that if you're going to have a number of classes out there, eventually that grass would just turn to dirt.
Oh, yeah.
Be a problem, so.
Have they been using the stage on the side regularly this year?
I've never seen them use it ever.
I mean, putting aside Charlie Brown.
I, um.
I don't know. I don't.
I don't know.
I didn't even know it was there and I've been in the district how long?
Again, this was not on the.
Yeah, no.
Priority list. So I mean, it came up in discussion, so it was brought here, but there's certainly, you know, when we look at the list of priorities and we don't have to add, I mean, the middle school is getting quite a bit in the bond, so.
I love the concept on the side of the building and maybe there's a design that can incorporate a stage in there where it could be a multipurpose space, not in the front of the school.
I feel like we're just not sold on this, so perhaps we could get some more information about the administration, about how exactly it would be used.
How often are they using the other areas?
Right, like what are they using the pavilion and the, and the stage for?
And what's the goal for, what's the goal for a space like this?
Yeah.
Well, the pavilion doesn't have electricity, from what I understand, correct?
But it is. With, with this project, we are bringing electric out there.
Okay. So we'll have that space, but that's a small, that's not that big of a space.
Well, enough for a classroom or two.
Right, but you could have two spaces and have a, you know, on the side.
I mean, I just want to understand what, what we're doing here and if that could be better, if that goal could be better met by improving the pavilion or improving the stage, then that seems like a better option than mowing down this, this nice little hilly area.
I love that little hilly area.
So the, the stage, we talked about expanding it. I mean, for Charlie Brown, we actually rented a stage extension. Do you want us to take a look at that? I mean, it's off to the side. You wouldn't see it necessarily from Kenwood.
Yes. I would be interested to know what it would look like if instead of doing this, we expanded.
The available space.
That space that's already existing over there and for some feedback from the middle school administration about whether that might help serve their needs better.
Okay. Good.
Thank you.
So I'm going to give you a quick recap. Hopefully, there's nothing that you're going to hear for the first time tonight of the synthetic turf proposal and our conversations that we've had so far. So the design would include all the necessary components. So you're going to have bleachers, scoreboard, your press box, concession area, safety nets, control netting, basically everything, okay? It would be used for phys ed classes and athletic, both practices and games. I've talked about this, that students have been playing on synthetic fields for many, many, many years around suburban council, around, around the country. Over the past few months, the district, I know, has only received letters of support for this proposal, which I believe has been provided to the board. The design will represent the most, the current standards for synthetic field design and overall, we're looking at about $5.2 million. Excellent. So at the May 19th, I'm going to go through just a couple of slides that you've seen before. At the May 19th board presentation, I identified a 2008 New York State Department of Health report that concluded that there were no major differences in the overall injury rates between natural and synthetic turf fields, okay? The report discusses that the consistency or the inconsistency of a field can influence injuries as you would expect. So artificial fields are groomed and have a very consistent play surface where natural grass can be lumpy or have bare spots. So basically inconsistent services, surfaces tend to pose a greater risk for player injury. So these conclusions in the 2008 report were supported by a 2018 report by the Department of Health. Again, at the May 19th board meeting, we discussed that there's, there are tens of thousands of fields out there that are being used at all levels and there is no definitive research or conclusions that synthetic fields pose any significant health hazards, okay? That same 2008 Department of Health report concluded that organic compounds admitted or outcast from the synthetic turf or the chrome rubber do not pose an inhalation or dermal absorption health hazard for athletes or the users. And these conclusions as well were identified in that 2018 report from the Department of Health. So at the last presentation, the board asked, well, how do we know what we're getting or how can we assure that the field that we get doesn't contain any, any toxic substances? Okay, so as with all of the construction elements associated with a project, we being the district, we state what we want with the design specifications and the drawings, okay? These provide the standards and the requirements by the district that must be adhered to by the contractor or the bidder on the project, okay? Prior to a shovel in the ground, the contractor provides submittals. To us, it tells us exactly what they are going to be putting in. And again, this is whether or not it's site items, whether or not it's interior construction, HVAC, this is just a standard process that, that we go through. Our team of architects, engineers, our construction managers, they review and approve or reject these submittals, okay? So in part, this is why we hire these professionals to basically be the eyes and the ears and the experts for what, what we are designing and what we get. All right? So at my office, I have many, many file cabinets with these approved submittals from previous projects. We are going a little more electronic now because I'm running out of room, so. And on, on the website, I, we put this on a while ago, but we put sample MSDS sheets, safety data sheets for sample chrome rubber, the, the actual grass, the backing and the shock pad, just to give the community a sense for, for what we're talking about here. So we've provided quite a bit of information over the past five presentations for, for you to consider. The proposal on synthetic turf represents the design team's recommendations based upon time-tested products and best value. At two prior meetings, we discussed different types of infill, okay? This is the, the little rubber beads that go in, in the grass. Our design team's recommendation is for what we call SBR or chrome rubber, okay? Basically, this is recycled tires. This is the most common and widely used fill for synthetic fields. We talked last time about EPDM, which is very similar to chrome, but it's a virgin material that is, is manufactured. And basically, if we were to go that route, it would cost probably about an extra $100,000 on the project for basically a facility of what we're proposing. Okay?
So types of material aside, where does the, where do the fields drain to? Where does runoff go? And what's, is, yeah, where do they drain to?
Yeah, so we have quite the spaghetti of underground pipes that collect water from all the fields and basically goes to the ravine that kind of is behind the tennis courts, that goes past transportation, if you've ever been back that way and walked that way at all, back in Project Adventure that way.
So, and we don't have any, we, we don't have any treatment facilities on site that are doing, you know, primary treatment before it goes off to sewage treatment plants?
And there's, this, no.
Or is this direct?
This is groundwater.
Discharge?
Yeah, this is groundwater, so we're not treating this.
We're not treating this and we're not, we're not piping it off?
No.
Okay.
It's not considered sanitary.
Well, yeah. Thank you.
Just to follow up about the reconstruction of the tennis courts. Christine, you're right, we have six, a bank of six, and then our, our basketball area that we just repaved a couple of years ago and then a set of two there, all right? We, as we looked at it, we decided that we needed full-depth restoration as we look at this project and that cost is about $869,000 to do this. As Judy mentioned, in the next couple of years, we think that section two is leaning towards providing a modified level of girls and boys tennis. So we're looking to upgrade these, all of the courts. Presently, they're used by JV Tennis for practices and matches and of course, they're used by, by PE. The price did shoot up quite a bit because of the full depth nature. It's not just a, a mill infill, so. So on August 11th, the board will need to finalize the scope and the costs and adopt a seeker resolution. This would allow the public vote on or about September 28th. So I'm going to just quickly touch upon the seeker process, which we've been through with every project. As part of the process, or part of this process, we have to identify project scopes that, where we have to assess each element and determine whether or not they have an impact on the environment. If so, what we have to do is include mitigating measures within the bond project. And this, this process is, is referred to as seeker, which is the State Environmental Quality Review Act. This has occurred before. This process has to occur before the board adopts the, the scope, okay? So, so the good news is that we have completed this process and basically none of the aspects of the project so far have any, any impact on the environment. So that's, that's good news and that would be identified in the seeker resolution that you guys would adopt on the 11th.
Has the draft scope been prepared?
Draft scope?
Mm-hmm.
Drew?
Yes. So we have base documentation for the SECPRA. The last thing we're looking to kind of include in there is the full scope. And, and again, while we do have some large site work that's happening on the project, it's not reaching the percentage of the overall campus where we're doing the work. That would kick this into a higher review process. So we can have that worked up and shared with the district if you'd like, Greg?
Drew's our district architect.
Love it. Thank you, Drew. And yeah, it would be, it would be great to see the draft one if it's prepared. Thank you.
Okay, so.
We'll make sure that, we'll make sure that you see it before the, before August 11th.
Yes. Thank you very much. Yes.
Not a problem.
And so, so we're just doing a short form is what you're saying? We're just doing the EAF?
That's exactly right.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so next steps? All right, so do we need to make any modifications to the proposed project elements so far? Any additional information that the board is looking to see? I know, and maybe why we have Drew on, we talked about stakeholder meetings and some involvement of some of you potentially in those.
Do you have the list of the stakeholders, Drews?
Yeah, so Drew, can you just give a quick synopsis of what we did in June and where we're going?
Certainly. Certainly. So out of the many items that we've got on the scope list, we identified 11 areas where we wanted to go back, speak directly with stakeholders and make sure that our understanding of the project was their understanding of the project and thus firm up the numbers that we had in our document that were being included into the project. What we didn't want to do and what we've experienced in the past is when we listen to a stakeholder group, we make a generalized understanding of the scope and then when we come to the design, that project grows and grows and grows and starts eating at budget. By doing this process now, before the bond, we're able to right-size all these costs. So we had 11 groups. I'll just go down them real quickly. So the HS Main Office project, the HS Field Two turf project, middle school fax rooms, middle school auditorium, transportation offices, middle school technology classrooms, Slingerland's classrooms, Hammergrill Kitchen, Slingerland's Kitchen, middle school library media center, and the, what we call the pit areas and the hallways of Hammergrill and Glenmont. And we completed all of the first meetings with all of these groups last month.
Yes, so just to key in on that, and Judy mentioned this, that we had a number of those meetings in June. that we had a number of those meetings in June. And from that, we, the scope potentially changed a little bit from what we initially were thinking. And we're going back to the drawing bar, drawing board, looking at the estimates to make sure that what, what is desired is what we have money for, and do we need to adjust any numbers? So, we're going to be reporting back on that at the next meeting.
Can you elaborate on that at all now? I'm just wondering where, what areas look like they're going to change? Of those 11 groups?
All of them.
Yeah, some of them, let me just step in there. Some of them change more than others. Specifically, let's talk about the ones that necessarily aren't changing very much. The middle school LMC and the middle school auditorium, we had multiple meetings with them prior to this bond even occurring. And we've narrowed that down and costed that for a rather long time. And those costs aren't really changing that much. Similar with Slingerlands classrooms, middle school tech classrooms, Hammergrill Kitchen, the transportation offices, the fax rooms, the main office. These things have all fallen relatively within the costs that we have and the contingencies we have built into those costs. There are still four more meetings that we need to have with a couple of the groups. But we're not expecting big moves and shakes. But there, you know, as we've discussed, there were some adds that came out of this. And I will say that the teaching area outside of the LMC, that, that request and that idea has been part of every LMC meeting we have had to date, before this bond and during this development process. So, it's, it doesn't necessarily have to be exactly there. And we'll certainly look into ideas of moving it around. And I think, you know, middle school administration could weigh in as well. So that's what, that's where we're at with the stakeholder meetings. And I can't say this enough, these are not the last times that we're going to be meeting with these people. All the way through the design process, we're going to be meeting with them again and again to make sure that the design process and the ideas that we're coming up with match their goals at every single point, so that we never get out of sync with one another. And everybody, the stakeholders, the administration, the design team, all understand the same things about the content of the project and what we're looking to achieve with the project.
What about the tennis courts? Have that been added to the, to have stakeholders or anything about?
We'd probably just meet with, you know, Len Keys, who we already talked about. Prior to Fred retiring, we talked to him about the importance of those courts to PE and whether or not we could do it less. And you see the results of the proposal?
Yeah, I was just thinking, the coaches might want to, you know, that have been around a long time, might have some feedback.
Yeah, usually.
Might have like, good or bad from the high school renovations to.
Yeah, Len wouldn't involve, it's not that complicated. And Len would involve a coach typically, things like gates, you know. And, and again, as Drew mentioned, we'll design this, we'll get into schematic design. And I think we're looking to have a couple more meetings in September, Drew? For these remainder?
Yeah, that's right. So, there are four, there are four groups that we need to come back to to gather more information. We're going to tie that with design meetings and schematic design that we're going to be having with all of these areas. And those places, we need to come back and talk to a little bit more. Our middle school fax, the high school field, the Slingerlands classrooms, and the middle school tech rooms. All of those need a little bit more information, but none of that is going to be in our way for developing preliminary plans. And we're hoping to have those meetings in September when all of the stakeholders are back in, in the school.
Greg, you've talked this evening about the proposals that we've seen up to this point and changes to them. Earlier this evening, the board was discussing the fact that it looks like we'll have more money available than we are currently looking to spend. So, do you yet have a list of other items that we can discuss?
Yeah, so we have a value of those, I think it was A to Z, Drew? I believe items that.
Yeah, for, as far as the escalation from the 35-9 number till today, we have a list of 26 or 27 items that total up to exactly all the moves that we made and what the rationale was behind the moves. And we can share that at the next meeting.
Isn't the next meeting when we have to make a decision?
We don't have to, it just pushes the timeframe back. This would, that was.
But, but it would, but the.
It would be ideal.
If we had to vote in September.
You'd have to, you'd have to.
We'd have to make the decision on the 11th.
So if you didn't make the decision on the 11th, then it would push the vote back, whatever the difference is.
So, we wanted to see what was next on the list?
Yeah.
If we have additional money, and you, I think you heard us talk about.
Yep.
The bigger, if there's a bigger project, what would that next bigger project be?
Yeah, so I mean, you can look on the website. We'll provide it to you, but you can look on the website. And basically, this, this, this proposal is the high and the medium highs. Okay, the priorities. We haven't gotten into the mediums yet. And we can, there's a list, we could prioritize that for you, for the board to consider.
Yeah, we'd like a prioritized list, that would be very helpful. And also enough so that when Judy does her calculation to potentially get to a net zero rather than the 200 positive, that we have the ability to consider that if it's something the board wants to do.
If you remember the last project, we had the bond builder sheets, and we, we had a line, and we moved that line. Some projects we moved down, some we moved up into the project to come to that final number. So, we can, we can do the same thing.
Something similar to that.
Okay. Thank you.
Can we talk about the turf field amongst the board a little bit? Just with you still there, about what is everybody thinking in regards to like, material? Are you in favor of it? You know, we've been talking about it for, you know, several meetings now. Just to get an idea, and I can start, that I'm in favor of a turf field at this point. I think many schools have it. Do I have concerns about some of the materials? Sure, but most of the schools have it. I'm concerned or hesitant to change the material because that's not the common build of the turf field. So I want to cause problems because we want to do something a little bit different. But yet, I still want to be green or safe. So I just, I'm just curious where everybody else falls on that, so we can give you an idea of where we're leaning as well.
Well, I was just wanting, first, I was going to say thank you to you. I know I've asked a lot of questions over the past few meetings, specifically about the turf field and not, mainly because I just want to make sure that, that we are doing our due diligence in terms of whatever decisions that we're making. And I really appreciate the information that you've given back. And I do also appreciate the feedback that, and information that we've gotten from the community and from our coaching staff about the necessity for the turf field. And in some ways, it's safety in comparison to playing on, on a regular grass field that, as you mentioned tonight, could be inconsistent. And, and I did go back, we were provided with some of the reports from the Department of Health, which I looked through, and additional information. And I, I personally, I'm in favor of moving forward with it. And I do agree with you, Christine. I think that if we are going to, I think going with the recommended fill would be less risky than using something that is untested and, and might, we might regret using down the road because it is an expensive project. Those are my couple of cents. And if anyone else has thoughts?
Sure, I'm also very in favor of going ahead with the turf field because of all the regions, or reasons that you've mentioned already. And I have one question about the recycled materials when they redo them. I mean, they're pretty much cleaned again before they, you know, they're less toxic the more the recycling processes occurred, right? So you're getting less dangerous materials every time you're using.
Yeah, we actually, we talked about this a couple of meetings ago. Where if we're thinking about being green, do you want to manufacture the EPDM, you know, rubber? Or do we want to recycle something, which is probably coming from another field? That isn't just going to be raked off and then put in a bag. But there's a process that happens to clean it and to make sure that it meets the standards of whatever company we're going to get it from. So, yeah, so.
But I don't think we can say that it's going to be less toxic or cleaner or, just because you're putting soap and water or whatever they use to clean these remnants of tires. You can have clean tires, it doesn't mean the tire's any less hazardous, let's say. And I'm not saying that they are, I'm saying that there is a concern. But I don't think we can say or should say that it's going to be cleaner just because we're putting some soap and water on. That they might release less affluent in the air.
I mean, typically, they leach and release more over time and when exposed to the elements. So, while my friends in athletics would not support me in this, I don't, I don't think we should be laying down acres of plastics, which will degrade into microplastics, which we're already facing a huge water quality, water contamination problem with nationwide and locally as well. This is going to find its way into groundwater and into water supplies and water sources. And so, there are short-term and long-term gains to be juggled from manufacturing to laying it down, to drawing it back up, to the leachate. This is not good for our community, it's not good for our students.
Meredith or Jonathan, did you guys have any?
I, I just want to say thank you for that clarity because I've been struggling with this. I forgot about the microplastic issue. So thank you for bringing that to my attention again. I am very troubled by it. I know this is what the sporting community wants. I know it's what other communities do. But just because other communities do it doesn't mean it's the right thing for us to do. I am still very troubled by going to a grass turf, and I'm, I'm struggling with the decision. I, at this point, I don't think I can support a grass turf.
I too am undecided. I appreciate all the information that we've gotten. And I, I understand these studies have been done. And my concern is what Catherine voiced, which, which is not necessarily about injuries or anything like that, but just the, the effect on our community in general. So I, I'm not decided at this point. I understand, I also understand the opposite viewpoint regarding how our PE class is needed and our athletics need it. I absolutely have heard that, and I understand it. I understand that our, our students are already playing on it. So, you know, I see that point. I'm just, I'm undecided at this point. And I'm hoping to just get some more information, read some more studies. And I'm open to either at this point.
I just wanted to add too, though, there aren't any studies that definitively say that turf fields are causing cancer. I mean, there's turf fields across the country, and NFL plays on turf fields. And speaking from somebody who has two cancer, people who have been in my house, myself and my daughter, there's corporations that are in Selkirk that admit stuff that aren't looked into regularly. We have a high rate of cancer in the area. The turf field isn't going to make or break a difference. I don't believe in the community. And unless there's something definitively that says it is, I'm not going to be the one to say no when there are things that show that it's the way that schools are going and it's safer to play in some instances versus wet grass.
Anybody have other comments specifically on this?
Not about the turf, but just the key decisions. So the modifications, the only one you want really more information on right now is that middle school outdoor space, right? For the next meeting?
Yeah, so the middle school outdoor space, and then a prioritized list of.
Additional items.
Additional items.
Yep, and a big, the next big project that you would put as a priority.
Yep. And then, you know, I think because the, some of the board members are interested in sitting in on some of the stakeholder groups, if you could maybe provide me with a list of those 11 groups? And then I can reach out to the board members.
Do you want to just put them in the updates on Friday? And then people could let Brittany know if they're interested in any of them? So that way she could get it to Greg and Drew?
Yeah, so we haven't, those won't be scheduled till we're back in session?
Sure, but I know people like to.
Okay. Yeah, we're down to like, four groups now, as Drew mentioned. But I can provide you what those groups are.
Okay. So the other seven are no longer meeting at all?
Uh, not at all.
No, not at all. And I would, I would say that the, for the other seven, we're going to be having our first schematic design meeting, where we'll be sharing our first iterations on plans and ideas and sharing it with the group. I would say if the, if anyone on the board wants to see how we work or how the process is going, any one of these next 11 meetings would be worthwhile to go to. Not just the ones where we're specifically coming after stakeholder information, which would be the four that I mentioned.
Yeah, and that's, that's, I think, what.
Right.
The board was getting at, was being able to sit in on some of those conversations.
Are they scheduled already?
No.
No. So, can we just go back one slide? So I just want to caution the board that if, I know we were shooting to have the scope and all finalized by the 11th. As you heard from Drew, they have already started with some of the information finding and, and started working on the schematic designs, even though we technically don't have a project yet. We had to condense the design schedule quite a bit because we were hoping to get into SED. You know, let's design it as quick as Drew and his crew can. In fact, we bumped that number down. But the very important number, date is the February 23rd, January 23rd, when, after we get approval from SED and we go out to bid. If that slips a lot, and we don't want to be bidding this out in April, May of 2023 because it's very possible that we would lose that summer of '23 for construction. Okay, so.
Could we have a special board meeting if we needed to?
To approve?
Yes.
Sure.
Yeah, we can have.
To, so we don't.
Between August and September?
As, as long as we have a majority, we could do it.
Yeah, we just have to publicly announce it.
And being conscious of that August 11th date, how quickly do you think you could get us a prioritized list?
Yes, so all of the information that you provided is readily available, and we can easily get it to you.
We can have it in the, by Friday update.
Yeah.
That would be great.
We, the one would be the, the middle school. Whether or not we would look at expanding the stage area and swinging that around. That may take a little bit more, but at least we could give you all the lists that you were looking for.
That would be great, if, I mean, if we could get it by Friday. And if there's any way, I'll just say, if there's something on the list that is not self-explanatory, a little description would be great.
Yeah, I think we've been very careful in the scope list so far to be as descriptive as possible so that anyone can understand what we're doing. And so, we'll share the list, but if there's any question, I would not hesitate to reach out if there's a question about any of the items.
Thanks, Drew.
Okay. Good, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Greg.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda, item 12 is our recognition of public comment on an agenda item. If we have anybody with us tonight who would like to address the Board of Education on any of the agenda items, now would be the time to come up to the microphone and state your name.
name.
My name is David Rounds. I'm the boys head lacrosse coach. I've been coaching at Bethlehem for 26 years. Have to be honest, I'm a little disappointed that we're still hesitant in our conversations about the turf field. What we have at this school is inadequate. It's subpar. It's an embarrassment to our sports programs. I don't care how many times you make improvements to the fields out there. We are on clay. Clay always comes to the surface. That fenced-in field is in a great location. It's unusable 75% of the time. I coach spring sports. I spend a whole entire month of March in a gym. A lacrosse field is 110 yards long. It's 60 yards wide. I'm in a gym for a third of the year. Okay, my, my athletes have to go to St. Rose, or Ravina, or Aframs, or Albany, until 11 o'clock at night just to practice if we get outside to get on a field. Okay, we spent months and months and talk about sleep for our students. How healthy is it to have my athletes on a bus at 11 o'clock at St. Rose? Okay, or, you know, down at Ravina? I mean, 26 years I've been here. Okay, and it's simple. I look at the schedule. The thought that we might not even start construction until 2024, just, it's so depressing in a sense that we're, you know, even if we get the field, we have to wait another three years. I mean, if you want to look at health and safety, please go on a field after a heavy rain. The field's leached some type of oil substance. We literally have goose feces all over the place. Okay, you know, that field that we spent a lot of money on is unplayable to the point where you sink six inches into it three days after a rainstorm. Okay, I mean, our, our athletes deserve better. I understand that there's hesitancy, you know, in terms of putting, you know, a synthetic field out there, but if you, if you look at the list of the items that we have on there, we're already discussing putting concrete in a pavilion on grass next to the football field. We're talking about putting concrete in another pavilion down at the middle school. We're talking about resurfacing concrete. Okay, I mean, if that's a serious concern, then we better take a look at a lot of the items on the list, because we're already doing those things. I mean, this, this is not about wanting a turf field. It's about needing. It's a necessity. I mean, our sports cannot function in the spring without a synthetic field on a fair and equal basis with every other program that has turf, and that's the majority of them. Okay, and most schools in this area are now converting their first field, they've had 10 years, to a brand-new field, plus a lot of them are starting to build a second field. Okay, we are, we are so far behind athletically, and the only way we're able to compete is by renting turf at thousands of dollars to the cost of the booster clubs every single year, and that's not fair. I mean, and no, what other programs are we expecting asking to raise thousands of dollars just to compete, just to, you know, due to their season? I mean, I mean, obviously, I have invested interest in this because I've been out in a slot for 26 years. I mean, and by the time this field is built, I'm probably not even going to be coaching anymore. But for the future of our athletes, you know, this is, this is not a wish list item. This is an absolute essential thing if we're going to compete. Okay, and again, I mean, I know there's several coaches here. I coach on turf already for clubs and out of season. Behind Clarksville Elementary School, there is now a turf field. Okay, I mean, it's been there for half a year now. Our athletes are on turf all the time. Our coaches are on turf all the time. The difference is, we have to travel a half hour for it, or pay $10,000 a season just to rent it. Okay, I really urge you to put this on the final bond issue out of necessity. It's, it's not a wish list item. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who'd like to speak?
Hello, thanks for the opportunity to address the board. My name's Emily Shrapewitzki. I'm here as a parent of two student athletes, two girls, involved in multiple sports, but relevant for this conversation with respect to the turf, both lacrosse and field hockey. We talked a little bit about material safety. I think the material safety data sheets were very helpful and informative for the board's decision. When you look at the capital projects that are identified as part of this capital facility, there is roofing replacement, there's concrete, there's asphalt. It's very important that we be environmentally minded, but having the proper facilities for our student athletes factors directly into the strategic plans that the board has established. For the strategic planning, you've identified character building, community, and wellness. And I think after the last year and a half of having very restricted activities for our students, we know how important it is to have the additional opportunities, the extracurricular activities for our students for their overall health and safety and well-being. And certainly, I personally am a very strong advocate of what athletics does for all of our students, being the mother of girls. I think it's critically important for building confidence in, in, in all of our children. And I just think that this is a way to show our continued commitment to the athletics program here at Bethlehem, and I'd like to echo the thought that this is not about creating the best sports facilities in this region. It's really just bringing us on par. We've invested heavily in our commitment to all, all forms of academics, to music, to, to many, many things, and I support all of that. Athletics needs to be part of what we're supporting our kids in. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? Moving on to item 13, action items. A, finance action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following finance action items 1 through 15.
Shall move.
Any discussion? I'll just note and say thank you for, we have several donations that are in the list, and thank you on behalf of the board for those. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? B, professional personnel action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following professional personnel action items 1 through 17.
Shall move.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? C, support personnel action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items 1 through 16.
Shall move.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? D, other action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following action items 1 and 2.
Shall move.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? Item 14, recognition of public comment on non-agenda items. At this time, if we have any visitors who would like to address the board on any non-agenda items, now would be the time to come to the microphone. Seeing no one, moving on to item 15, future meetings and events. Our next board meeting is on Wednesday.